Well, it's 4:31. Why don't we go ahead and get started? Welcome, everybody, to the workshop on the American Rescue Plan of 2021 and the Coronavirus Fiscal Recovery Fund. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Yvonne. Yvonne has prepared an outline, and she will provide to us all every bit of information that the administration has received to date on this program. Yvonne?
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope everyone's having a good day.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Hi, Yvonne.
Hello.
Hi, Angie, Bryant, Delia, Don, Michael. I think there's more than what's on my screen here. Well, my staff and I have put together a PowerPoint that I'm going to go into in just a minute here to just go over the information that we've learned so far on the American Rescue Plan. So if everybody's ready, I'm going to share my screen so you can see the PowerPoint. Do we know how to do this? I think this is...
I gotta go talk to Mark, man. That dude's gotta be turning the breeze in the air.
Oops.
There you go, Yvonne.
Oh, is it sharing?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay. Okay, so I'm just going to, like I said, discuss the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. So what this is, is as you all are aware, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 is a $1.9 trillion economic stimulus bill that was signed into law by President Biden on March 21, 2021. Within the ARP creates the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, which allocate $65.1 billion to 19,000 municipalities across the United States. And the United States Treasury is responsible for distributing and distributing this program, and they are currently developing methods and guidelines for the allocations and oversight process of these funds. So with these funds, there's a lot of benefits to the city of Michigan City. We anticipate to receive $16.73 million. And this will be funding given to us over the next two years, with the first 50% of this, a little over $8 million, we anticipate to receive around May 11 of this year. With the last 50%, we anticipate to receive around this May 11 of 2022. So what do we need to do when we receive this money? We've already started the process, and the State Examiner for the State Board of Accounts sent out Directive 2021-1, which can be found at www.in.gov stateboardofaccounts. And what this directive states is that we need to create an ordinance, or we need to have an ordinance to create the fund, because the State Board of Accounts is mandating that these funds be tracked separately from all of our other city funds. We have named this fund the American Rescue Plan Local Fiscal Recovery Fund Number 0176. And in the ordinance, it specifies the uses of the fund, and it references a plan that we will begin working on in the near future. So, like I said, we've already started this process, and as you're all aware, that this will appear on second reading on the council's April 20 agenda. So to establish the spending plan, basically, we had some food for thought. Do we want to establish a joint advisory committee with representatives from all sectors of the city, from businesses, not-for-profits, education, community leaders, churches, citizens, to get their input on how they feel these funds should be used and what benefits they would like to see come to the city? We also need to do some data collection from these people and find out what they're looking for. We need to consider that this plan is going to be what we like to call a "living document", that when the council finalizes this plan, that it's not going to be written in stone, that we need to keep this a live document that can be amended as needed, or revised, or added to. And part of that is implementing strategic planning and how we're going to move forward with these funds. And then a reminder that there may be some misunderstanding on the deadline to spend these funds. The deadline to spend these funds is December 31 of 2024. So we have three and a half years to develop a plan and spend these funds. Then, going through all of our information, the National League of Cities had put out what they called Principles for the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. And one of them being the use is, considering the use of these funds, we want to use dedicated grants and programs first, whenever possible. And we want to save these local fiscal recovery funds for the gaps and priorities not eligible for any other federal or state assistance programs. And once again, we want to assess our government operations and our community needs. And we need to ask valuable staff and stakeholders for help in creating a comprehensive needs assessment. We want to prioritize the fiscal stability and returning to work for our city and save our pet projects for other earmarks. And then, finally, we need to maintain records and good documentation. And we need to documentation our success and let everybody know what we've done with these funds and how successful we have been with them. And we also need to create a long-term information infrastructure for our future leaders. Things we're being told from the National League of Cities is that these audits, that these funds were guaranteed to be audited on these funds, but these audits could extend out 10 years from that December 31, 2024. And in 10 years, the administration and the council and our department heads, a lot of that may or probably will be changed by that time. So we need to make sure that we actually are documenting what we are doing, keeping good records of what we've done and what we've spent this money on. So looking at the fund usage, what can we use these monies on? And this comes directly from Section 603(c) of the Social Security Act of the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. And the first one is "to respond to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small business, and not-for-profits, or to aid impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality." The second use that they have outlined is "to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of a metropolitan city non-entitlement unit of local government or county that are performing such essential work, or by providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work." A third category is "for the provision of government services to the extent of reduction in revenue of such metropolitan cities non-entitled unit of local government or county due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year, which is 2019, of the metropolitan city non-entitlement unit of government or county prior to this emergency." And the last, but definitely not least, is "to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure." So we're looking at what's next. We have an outline of what we can spend this money on. So what do we need to do now? So I'd like to stress, once again, that there is no hurry to develop this plan. We have three and a half years to spend this money. So we have time. And right now, there are a lot more questions out there than there are answers. For example, on the latest webinar that I watched from the National League of Cities, they have submitted a 21-page letter of questions to the Secretary of Treasury. And these are questions that they've received from municipalities across the United States, on questions people have on what to spend this money on. So we need to look at what things do we need to consider? Do we want to create a position to oversee this project and the spending of this plan? That would be a temporary position that would expire at the end of this program? Do we want to hire a contractor to help oversee the projects and spending of the plan? And, for example, I had just read an article that the city of McCorr has just entered into a contract with Baker Tilly to assist them. And this would just to keep them on track and make sure that all of the monies are spent appropriately. So when can we expect more guidance? Well, the American Rescue Plan Act gives the United States Department of Treasury 60 days from enactment, which was March 11 of 2021, to make their allocations to the state and local government. So considering the complexity of distributing these funds to 19,000 cities, towns, and villages, the Treasury may take close to that 90 days to also develop guidelines that we... I'm sorry, 60 days to develop guidance for us to follow. So moving on into our uses, we've created some slides to just give some examples of the broad uses that they've put out there. One of them, and we think, we, the administration, here thinks that community investment holds a high priority, that investing these dollars into our community for things like engaging community organizations and after-school youth needs for learning and development, to work with partners to increase Internet access and digital literacy for online learners and their families, and just to ensure equitable access to resources and opportunities for all of our children and youth in the community. So, yeah, community investment, I think, needs to probably be one of our top priorities. You know, along with that, show support for our small business essential workers and our job seekers to understand that local employment trends and work closely with the local workforce and employees to connect job seekers with actual work, to engage the local community colleges, PNW and Ivy Tech, or job training providers to ensure that skills development opportunities are available and that we match employer needs. And lastly, to identify what you know, what you don't, and local entrepreneurs and their needs. So moving on to our second category of spending is premium pay for the essential workers. And we feel that we should respond to the workers that have been performing the essential work all during this public health emergency and to provide a premium pay to these eligible city workers. And essential workers, by definition, is designated by the local chief officer, which in Michigan City would be the mayor. And the mayor has identified approximately 450 workers throughout the city as essential workers. The law allows for up to $13 per hour and/or no more than $25,000 per employee. And part of this provision also allows the city to provide grants to eligible employers with eligible workers who perform essential work during this public health emergency. The third category is revenue replacement. And this was one that the National League of Cities lobbied really hard with all of our legislatures on getting this in this bill to help the cities and towns that suffered greatly by loss of revenues during the shutdowns with COVID. So when we're looking at the city, and we're just looking at our 2020 lost revenues, and this is, once again, based on the fiscal year 2019, which is our base level that we're allowed to look at, our park operating fund had lost revenues due to COVID closures of $549,405. Our motor vehicle highway lost $391,261. Our riverboat, due to the closure of Blue Chip, lost $31,177,223, for a total lost revenue throughout the city of just over $4.1 million. And our last category, and like I had said before, definitely not our least, is the infrastructure. And we're looking, we want to support full access to public infrastructures like water and sewer and broadband. So we need to, with the broadband, and this seems to be a big topic across the United States, is to close this digital divide. We need to give our neighborhoods and our citizens access to digital... I'm sorry.
Locking in the access?
Yeah. You know, and the access to the digital divide on a neighborhood level across the entire community. We need to support residents' access to their devices and ensure that everyone has a connection. And then to consider developing residents' digital skills and so we can help, once again, close this digital divide.
Internet access.
Yeah. These categories are very broad, and they're probably that way on purpose, which will give us some latitude on developing our plan and developing programs and projects that we would like to see happen with our city. So in closing, right now, we... You know, our timeline, as you can see, doesn't have much on here. We... You know, so the American Rescue Plan became law on March 11. We expect to see our first distribution around May 11 of this year. And we have until December 31 of 2024 to implement our plan and spend this money down. And like I had said at the beginning, there are still a lot more questions than there are answers on this program. So I am open to any questions that the council or anybody may have on any of this information that I've presented. And I understand that this is a lot of information.
Yeah, Yvonne?
Yeah, Don?
Yeah, are you open to questions now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right. Just a couple of them. Going back to the management of the whole program. And as you mentioned, you know, LaPorte hired Baker Tilly to manage their program over there. And I was reading somewhere that Baker Tilly's also... LaPorte's not the only city in the area to hire Baker Tilly. And I think this is going to be a big-time project that, and apparently, you feel, Yvonne, that the city doesn't have the means to manage this type of program, you know, besides our day-to-day work. So would you be requesting and suggesting that, you know, we go out and get a bid from Baker Tilly and see how much he would charge us to manage this program from beginning to end? I don't have a problem with that, if that's possibly what you're thinking about. Is that what you're thinking about?
Yes, that is one of the ideas that, you know, that we were thinking about, because this is a lot. And there could be some serious repercussions if this money is not spent appropriately. And it may not happen now, but I would hate to see if we missed something and have to repay this money, you know, eight to 10 years down the road.
Right. Okay. I agree with you on that point. I would go out and get a bid from him and see how much it's going to cost the city. I have no problem with that.
Right, and that could be something that, you know, that we would develop with the plan. Because from what I understand, this would be an expense that we could include with the plan to spend a small portion on what we would call the administration of the plan.
And, you know, you were talking about the lost revenues. And so that $4 million, is that going back to the Treasury Department to see if they're going to reimburse us, reimburse cities for that? Or are we going to be able to get that money out of this program?
No, no, that would be an allowable expense.
Oh, okay.
Or allowable expense from this money. But there are some other, you know, there are some stipulations on this also. We cannot just transfer that money to those operating funds. We would have to spend the relative expenses out of the American Rescue Plan Fund up to those dollar amounts of our losses. And I just remembered one thing I forgot to mention under the lost revenue segment is that we can consider revenue lost in 2021, 2022, and 2023 because of, I believe, a loss that we are going to see in 2022 and 2023 would be of our local income tax. And that would be like our, what we used to call our "cedant and cajet tax", because those distributions are based on a biannual... Is that the right one? Biannual cycle. So we didn't see a loss on that revenue last year because it was looking at '18 and '19 for that local income tax. But when we get to 2022, it's going to be looking at 2019 and 2020 for our distribution, you know, for our allotment of those income taxes. And then the same for 2023, it's going to look at '21 and '21. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
So we need to keep that cognizant also, that we may want to be looking at some revenue replacement for those funds later on in the cycle of this plan.
Yeah, okay. And then just one more question on those same lines. Is that, take, for example, that $4 million that you explained today from lost revenue. So out of the $16 million, we would be counting $4 million right off the top. We'd come off of that $16, and that's going to leave us $12 million. And then the other years, if it's 2019, 2020, and if there is, you know, $2 million expendable in each of those years, then that's another $4 million. So now we're down to $10 million, right?
Well, you know, those are the upper limits that we could. We don't... We can request it, but we don't even have to if we don't want to.
Okay, all right. Okay, and then, are you going to send it? Yvonne, are you going to send this PowerPoint out to all the council members?
Yeah, I already have.
Okay, thanks, all right.
Hey, Yvonne, this is Mike. I want to compliment you on prioritizing, you in the administration, prioritizing that local community enrichment area. I think we spoke about that a little bit when we were talking about some other subject yesterday. And that's really my big rock, is that, you know, that's the bucket of money that really is going to make impact on our community long term. I wouldn't characterize any of it as a special interest spending. Those people, you know, we should be able to come up with some great things for our community ourselves. And with that, I also want to ask you again on the possibility of... You mentioned the possibility of the Baker Tilly deal, but you also mentioned us hiring somebody to accommodate the same thing. And, you know, I personally believe out of the 30,000 people in Michigan City, we've got some seriously smart, professional people that we could create a position that really, that someone is here, boots on the ground, that actually can help us identify priorities and spending priorities and have the ability to meet the needs of the Indiana auditors, too. So right off the top, I really like the idea that if the administration and the council together aren't capable of operating this money, which, you know, we do riverboats, we do a $50 million budget, I don't see where people of goodwill can accomplish this task. But if we come to the conclusion that we can't and we have to get an outside arbitrator, I would personally like the idea of us finding somebody local that we can actually get that money to. And you're invited tomorrow to ours. I want to invite you personally to ours. There is a plan. It was called the Vibrant Communities Plan. It was done by the Unity Foundation. A lot, a lot of people were involved. And right before they were to throw out the results of the studies and the housing studies and the poverty studies and the race and ethic and all of the studies that this American Rescue Plan alludes to, COVID hit, and they weren't able to put it out. There is an existing plan that deep dives into the problems that Michigan City has and some solutions. It doesn't ask for any money. It just is a template that shows... It's almost like perfect timing for it. So I'd invite you to be a panelist on that tomorrow, if you'd like. I've got the Unity Foundation going to speak to those results on that. They're not going to speak to, you know, ask them for anything because this just came up. They're just going to speak to the existing results. And if you want to take a little while and all of you, and investigate the Vibrant Communities website. It gives a lot of results and things that have already prioritized a lot of need. that have already prioritized a lot of needs for our community. Um, it it almost puts us ahead of the curve if we actually deep dive into that, so. But thank you for, uh, thank you for the presentation, Yvonne. Very good.
You're welcome.
You have a question?
Yes.
Um, I have read that there is a separate fund going to schools, is that correct, or the school is gonna receive money that's outside of this award?
I I I believe so. I I didn't actually double check that, but I believe, I believe that is the case. I I know the county does, and um
Yeah, you're right, dollars, twenty three million dollars.
Yeah, they they receive.
They've already got twenty three million.
Oh, okay. Cause that was one thing I wanted to look on that. Yeah, and 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 I think we feel, you you know, that we should, you know, collaborate with with other places so we, so everybody can get the the best use out of all of their dollars. And we're not, we're not stepping on each other or spending the same dollars on the same thing.
That is absolutely correct, and that collaboration is a lot more than just, you know, like, I've had a few conversations with not council members, but other people, and uh the first thing you hear sometimes is, well, they get to do that, they get to do that. But Michigan City area of the schools is uh comprised comprised of more than just Michigan City. So the collaboration would have to be intelligent collaboration between individuals that are trying to look out for the needs of Michigan City area school students, for us to just defer an entire spending category to the school system when it's diluted by, you know, the area school system. Uh, we're not actually laser focusing on the needs of the children that live in our city. So yeah, I I agree with that collaboration, but I would really want us to uh truly collaborate down to the nickel and dime and and pennies, uh, in the need, in the, in the interest of our children here in the Michigan City limits, I'll put it that way.
Quick question, Yvonne, this is Bryant.
Yes.
Now, when this, we we first got the news that this this money was gonna be uh coming out of this this bill that had passed, it was kind of a rumor going around, and which you obviously corrected in the PowerPoint, that so much money needed to be spent by the end of this year, and then next year, I mean, it was just just misinformation going around.
It wasn't a rumor, um, that was um a conversation that of notes that I had taken from a a conversation that me.
No, I heard it elsewhere, Angie.
Huh?
I heard it elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah, but I.
People are talking about it, so in my mind, you know, you might have mentioned it, but other people were talking about it as well, so I I called it a rumor. So, yeah, you had the information, but I had other people as well that were talking about it. So, uh, Yvonne, what I, wh- when I heard that information, talk about that date, I actually went out and started talking to somebody like eh at the uh North Central Community Action Agency and then put together a program. So I'll put some notes up and and send it to you, cause I wanna know just for sure, if we would be able to do something like what I was thinking about uh, in regards to their weatherization programs. You know, and they have certain people that they put on the referral list, and and I'll explain it to you. But I'll send it to you just to kinda get a feel for what I'm I'm talking about. Uh, but I went out and and laid it out, the the payment mechanism, the the, you know, how it all worked. But I'll send that to you guys, just so you can take a peek at it for me. Uh, cause I was, you know, looking at the PowerPoint and see what the money can be used for. Uh, but I went out and got got the work on this and came up with something that I think would be bringing value to to homes here in Michigan City, but I'll send that out to you so you can take a peek at it, and let me know what you think.
Okay, yeah, cause from from what I understand, you you know, we can spend money on anything that would fall within those categories under that six oh three C. And it has to be designated in the plan.
Right.
So so we just wanna make sure that you 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 know, that when when the plan is being put together, that that, you know, all all the ideas are taken into consideration. And 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 that the that that the council will want to prioritize them. You 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 know, to make sure that that, like, once again, that 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 the city gets the best deal for all of this money.
Thank you.
Hey, Yvonne, question. Uh, I know that you can use this money towards uh what do you wanna call it? The uh, the employees, okay, essential employees?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the, does that mean that they can be u- this money can be used as a bonus system? If we wanna give the employees in Michigan City a bonus for their work during the COVID nineteen crisis? Are we allowed to give bonuses out to the city employees?
Yes, I I I bel- I believe that, yes. I believe that's exactly what that means.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add to, um, like I said, you know, I I misspoke at our council meeting based on the conversation we had in my notes and what I wrote down when we met with Yvonne. So I know some of that um information to others may have come from March in the council meeting. And uh, so I'm glad that you corrected that, because um I had explicitly written it down, so I'm not not sure how we got to that point. But it's good news that we don't have to rush, um, I guess, because one of the biggest things is, um, and the concern that I have is that they're gonna be, you know, there are a lot of needs and a lot of things that need to get done. And um, you know, when we start talking about community, you know, communities and different organizations and different nonprofits, it's gonna be very important that we have a standard operating procedure and a needs assessment, um, you know, that is in place so that everyone feels like they have a voice. And I guess that that will be the number one priority um out the gate. Uh, it's good to meet with organizations, but we have to figure out a feedback loop to get the information from the organizations, so that all of the council members can see the information at the same time. So we really need to focus on a process, and and whether it's Baker Tilly or someone mentioned in the comments, an accounting firm, or whoever it is, or if it's an individual person. The public just needs to understand that um this isn't a special interest fund. It it is based on needs, and we have to have a way to score. You know, what's needed, so that, you know, people understand, but also infrastructure. You know, we know there are people within the city who were promised city sewer and water years ago that still don't have it, so we just need to make sure that we we look at this from a holistic approach, but also score it. And so that we can agree, you know, on what the priorities are. And I I just, I just wanna just reemphasize that it's good to go out and and meet with people, but it's it's one of those things that this is gonna take some time to make sure we do this the right way, and so that nobody feels slighted. Thanks.
Right, and well, and that was our, you know, our thought process on maybe something like a joint advisory committee. You 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 know, that that could could go out into the community and bring ideas back. That, you know, do a needs assessment and 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 bring forth ideas you, that that the community feels they need. You know, and and Angie, I I know what you're talking about, where there's parts of the city that still does not have city water or sewer. And 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 that probably does, could, that is, that's a legitimate need for the city right now. So um, yeah, so, and that was, that was like our idea about the joint advisory committee to try and help gather all of this information from from all different, different aspects of of the city, of the community as a whole. Oh, yeah, and and, oh, Angie, about the the beginning of May date that I believe that you might have referenced at the council meeting last week. That was um, we said we wanted to have this this fund, this ordinance passed by then, so we had a home to put this money in, because we needed that fund to receive the money. So that might have been where that May date came from?
No, I, no, I misspoke on something else. I said that we had to spend half the money by the.
Oh, oh, spend ha- oh, I I do remember that, cause I think I sent you guys an email about that.
Money by the end of this year, which is totally.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, yeah. I know, and and I think I cr- I sent an email out to the to the council that 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 December twenty, December thirty first, twenty twenty one was not actually a deadline, it's actually, all of it is on that December thirty first, twenty twenty four deadline.
Thank goodness.
Yes, yep. So like you said, once again, we can, we can take our time and and develop a a a good plan. Yeah, um, you know, a good solid plan that that that's going to just give the biggest benefit to the city. Any other, any other comments or questions or um?
Thanks for putting the plan together, Yvonne.
Yep. Yep, once again, I wanna, I just wanna give kudos to my staff because I was on vacation last weekend, and I was, we were just throwing information around, and and my staff, Tamiko and Mary Lynn were pulling things together while I was off on vacation and um helped me get all these slides put together, so we would, we could give this presentation to you, to you this afternoon.
Oh, have have lunch brought into them on Friday, and I'll pay the bill for them.
No.
All right? I'll take care of it.
Um, and what what time is the workshop tomorrow, Michael? Yep.
Three?
Three o'clock? Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, Caleb just put out there, he believes it's three o'clock. Okay, thank you. Yep, Mayor, do you, do you have anything you wanna add, or?
Nothing really, uh. Yvonne, just a a very good presentation. And and thank you and your staff very much for this.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, if there's no other comments or questions, I guess we'll adjourn then until tomorrow afternoon, three o'clock. Everybody have a good evening.
Good evening.